Why don't we take a roll call first, then I'll read the COVID message. Charlene?
Jim Peck.
Here.
Tim Moore.
Here.
Lori Muller.
Here.
Karen Robinson.
Here.
Francine Hart.
Here.
Jeffrey Adams.
Here.
Alma Lertie.
Here.
Greg Allen?
Greg's not here. Did you hear from Greg, Francine?
No, I do have a text into him and he hasn't responded. He may not come in.
Okay.
John Michel.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Why don't I read this, much as I don't like reading it, I'll read it. Okay, "The Plastow Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to the Executive Order 2020-04, is authorized to meet electronically. These reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. Notice of this electronic meeting was sent to all the butters and published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper. The Plastow Planning Board is utilizing the GoToWebinar program of the GoToMeeting platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the GoToWebinar program, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting. The link to access this meeting was provided on the town's website with a notice where to email with it. It is strongly suggested that you attest the link in advance of the meeting to make sure you are able to access it. Please report any issues to jcaschel@plastow.com. There is a raise your hand feature of the program that will allow attendees to participate in the discussion. There is also a Q&amp;A box for the public to type questions during the meeting. The public can also send emails or questions with concerns prior to and during the meeting to jpec206@plastow.com. In the minutes, you should say jpec206, Charlene, my email, if you want to correct that. Please note, all questions and concerns typed into the Q&amp;A box are sent via email. Will be read aloud to become part of the public record. The meeting will also be live on Plastow Access Cable Channel 17, and will be livestreaming on the town's website. Thank you very much." Okay, let's move to approving the minutes of the last meeting, which was January 6th. I think you all have them in your packages there. Does anybody have any amendments? Looking around, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 6th.
Thank you, Lori.
Second.
Second by Karen. Any discussion? In being known, I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Actually, roll call. Francine's causing us to have a roll call. Sorry, Francine. Go ahead.
Jim Peck.
Yes.
Tim Moore.
Yes.
Lori Muller.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Francine Hart.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 500. The minutes are approved. And we move into the public hearings. We have an open public hearing. I don't have to open it. It's already open, so we're continuing it.
Yep.
From January 6th. And if you recall, we did vote on four of the nine warrants, and we moved them forward. We did vote on one, two, five, and six. And so we have in front of us tonight, five of them: three, four, seven, eight, and nine, if I got it correct.
Yep.
I think I do.
Yep.
So let's move to three. And we have in our, we have, you know, put together the Voters' Guide. I guess we could refer to the Voters' Guide. Might be the better one to look at.
But if we want changes on the ballot?
What's that?
But don't we want to make sure the ballot is correct?
Well, we can look at what's in the ballot, but we need to approve the whole thing. But we're voting on what goes on the ballot.
Yep.
You can look at either one, if you want.
Good.
We're not going to read them tonight. That's the good news. We've read them ad nauseam. So let's move to number three, if you want to look at the ballot one. I'm looking at the Voters' Guide. I'm not sure if I can find three on the ballot. Let's see here.
We have to add the following.
Yeah, it's the bottom of the page on the one that says ballot, okay? So this is the ballot, and this is a very thin ballot, you know, compared to what's in the Voters' Guide. It's pretty thick. But we talked about that last time. We took quite a bit off, you know, for various stuff. So let's focus on the ballot one, then, just so we're all on the same page. At the bottom of the first page is Proposed Zoning Amendment Z-213. I'll read it. "Are you in favor of Amendment Number Three as proposed by the Plastow Planning Board to the Plastow zoning ordinance Article 5, establishment of districts and district regulations as follows: Two adds: One, add the C1 Danville Road Overlay District to Paragraph 2020-28 Paragraph A. And secondly, the part that's in red, add the following use to 220-32B Paragraph B, just adding function hall. So we need to either discuss this, and I know there was some discussion about function hall. We had quite a bit of discussion last time. We had a couple of public comments, which were pointed at a specific business utopia. Since then, I have read through the regulations that we read part of last time, which are, and I have them in here somewhere, two RSAs. One RSA is 155:66, and one is colon Section 15567, which lists the exemptions to that. There was some concern that, using utopia as an example, that a restaurant would use a, become a function hall. And according to the RSA, to become a function hall, my understanding is they have to, they have to become a social, fraternal, fraternal or religious organization, and they would have to have private parties in private rooms. And so that's a public business utopia. And I think the issues surrounding utopia are a separate set of issues, not related to what we're talking about. There are issues with utopia that, you know, some people in the town were complaining about the noise. Some people were complaining that they shouldn't serve alcohol. They had smoke in there. But that's not what we're talking about here. So I, after reading these two RSAs, I don't see that that should have any bearing on our approval of it. Now, if, I know some people here are not particularly fond about putting function halls in this district. That's another issue. So why don't we discuss it? I think that, I don't think anybody has any objection to adding C1 Danville Road Overlay District to that. I don't, nobody has any objection. I'll just throw that out. So let's talk about function hall. There's a definition in the next amendment.
Right.
And I know Lori has some comments.
Well, I can understand we want to add Danville Road Overlay to C1. I get that. I don't understand why we're trying to add function hall with that. Why can't we just add the Danville Road Overlay District to C1? Why do, why do we have to put function hall with that? And I don't have a problem with the function hall definition either.
Right.
Which is the next warrant, number four.
So I'd like to strike that line, add the following.
Okay.
To the 220-32B Paragraph B.
Treat it separately.
Function hall. I just, I don't understand why we're trying to add that with the overlay.
Okay, so let me give you my answer, what I think is the answer, and then I'll let Tim, because Tim's thought about it more than I have. But my answer was, we were adding it simply because it should have been added before. It was an oversight. We have an opportunity. Let's put it in. I mean, I'm just, I'll let Tim comment on it. So I think, I mean, is that, Tim, what you were thinking? There wasn't any, like, ulterior motive to put it in there?
I'm not saying that.
No, I'm not. No, you're not. Tim?
Yeah, no, you're right. I thought it was more of an oversight that we didn't have that in there. Since there are sort of function hall businesses along there, and they're not standalone function halls, which would be the intent here, but I don't have any burning desire to add function hall. I thought it was just an oversight that we would correct. But certainly no harm done in not adding it, so, I mean, which, which is why we printed it being red, so they, you know, stand out. So, I mean, if the majority people want to, want to strike that Number 25 function hall from C1, that's, that's fine with me.
You're okay with it? Francine has a comment. Francine?
Yeah.
I guess I have a question for the board. Is it a concern primarily for a freestanding function hall? Because it seems to me like the rest of the definition could be encompassed within restaurants, et cetera, that are already existing. So I guess my question is, is the concern about a freestanding function hall, is that the primary issue?
Well, I just thought that if we were going to add a definition to C1, why wouldn't we separately state it that way, that we're adding it to C1, rather than why is it put in with this Danville Road Overlay? I just don't understand that.
Well, I guess my question to you, then, is if you were going to add it to C1, if you were going to use it as a standalone function hall, I could see why it would be added into the C1. But if you are all comfortable with the definition, the function hall is encompassed within currently existing businesses, then you're right, Lori. As far as I'm concerned, I agree with you, and I don't think we need that in there. Does that make any sense?
Yes.
Any other comments?
My, forgive me, I missed some of the, you know, obviously, last meeting. But if a business wanted to perform as a function hall without this language in there, what would their, you know, how would it play out for them, is my question? Would they, does this restrict a business from doing that, if we don't have this amendment in there?
It could be within a business.
Well, if you go to the definition on the next, top of the next page, it defines what a function hall would be. So if both of these pass, that would be, you know, you could, it could be not a standalone, is my understanding. It says a room or a building for the purpose. So it could be a room within a building.
Right.
It could be a function hall. You know, you could be a restaurant and have a room, and I guess under the law now, you would have to somehow become a fraternal, or whatever the different terminology is, fraternal, social, fraternal, or religious, even in that room, it sounds like to me, when you read the regulations. So there, you know, it doesn't sound like you would have many restaurants who would want to do that. And in the case of utopia, they only have one room. So I'm not worried about that, unless they build another room. But remember the old Sawyers?
Yes.
I think, or actually, take the Crow's Nest. They have a separate room, and they may want to have a function in that room. I think that falls under the function hall, because they're hosting a party banquet, wedding, a reception, separate social event. Everybody's all in the same room. But then, when I go to the Smoking Act, it says you have to, you have to be a social, fraternal, or religious organization. I think. I mean, I'm not sure whether, under the new act, whether a restaurant can have that room. I'm a little confused on that. So if people are concerned of a restaurant having a separate room, not a standalone, you know, it would have to apply, it would have to follow the law. Does that confuse everybody enough? John?
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to go to John first, and I'll come to you, Francine. John?
Yeah, I just want to add a few comments. I live, what used to be in front of our house, a large function hall, 600-plus people. And it was used quite often, you know, cars up and down the street all the time. So it didn't really bother me. My wife didn't care, and at least she loved it, you know? It was always a party across the street. What I'm getting at is that, you know, some people do take these things to be a real onerous situation, because it does disrupt the peace and quiet, that, you know, if you live in that area. Other people aren't bothered by it. If it does stay in, you know, as a, as a use, as a use allowed in a zoning district, what you do have going for you as a community, you do have a noise ordinance. So if it does become a disruption, you know, a, you know, it's a disruption to the neighborhood of budding properties, you know, it can be enforced. A lot of times, that's not enough. I mean, I really used to get upset with, you know, big crowds in this particular place, you know, still making noise one, two o'clock in the morning. It's a little bit much. Now, when I was in Hudson, we had issues of function halls springing up everywhere, because they're one of those uses that certain business owners, you know, really like to locate, and they're in high demand. They're not always used. They might only have a function a month or something like that. But when they do have a function, whether it's a wedding, or, you know, bands playing at night, you know, it can be, you know, an issue for people that live near it. And, you know, some people like that stuff, other people don't. You know, they do pop up in places where you can least expect them to pop up, because they're one of those uses that, you know, people say, hey, I can make money doing this. I just have to find a place. Where can I locate them? And they'll locate them, you know, in places that you wouldn't even think of. But here, the zoning district does abut a lot of residents. So I can see what you're thinking about, is that you don't want these residential areas disrupted, you know, the normal course of events, the quality of life issues being disrupted, because these can be like that. Some people, it doesn't bother them. Other people, it does.
Okay, I just want to clarify what I said about RSA 15566 and 67. That only applies to smoking. And it says that you can't have smoking in restaurants, is one of the things you can't have, except if you're a social, fraternal, or religious. It doesn't say you can't have a separate function room where people can go and have a party, like, you know, the library has a party, or some, you know, some group that has a party at Christmas time. It's just smoking. And that's why it was kind of applied to utopia, because they're, a hoopla lounge, which is a cigar lounge. Francine, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I guess I don't know if it's even, I got to get away from interpreting RSA 15567. It does say under Section 4, excluding those that are publicly owned, when rented to these required functions. But they also include restaurants. So in my understanding of this is, you want to have a function, you want to smoke, and you rent that whole restaurant, and close it down. You're not allowing the public access to it, so you can smoke in that restaurant. But, you know, I think the bigger picture is, I think we're all concerned about function halls, per se, springing up all over the place. And I would not love having that happen in our town. And so maybe the definition on Page 2 should be not a room or building, but just a room. And that maybe settled that problem, but I would defer to John on that.
Okay. Well, do we, do we want to move to Number 4 first?
Can I just make another comment?
Yeah.
So, right now, with the new C1 overlay, we're trying to encourage residents into C1. So I can kind of see what John's saying.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're trying to encourage people to live.
And then we add function halls.
Live in C1.
I hear you. Well, do you want to make the motion on Number 3 and just take it out? Because it sounds like you might have the votes.
Yep.
We don't necessarily have to go to Number 4 and work on the definition. What do people think? Can we, can we, you want to make that motion?
To take out that one, that sentence?
Make a motion, whatever you want to do.
Okay, so I make, I make a motion on Amendment Z-21-3, to delete the, to delete the line that says, add the following use to 220-32B Paragraph B, and then it's like in quotations, 25 function hall. I'd like to delete that line.
Okay, motion on floor, a second, anybody?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, well, we have two seconds. That's even better.
Right.
I will let you duke it out, but I'll give it to Francine. Sorry, sorry. You did the last one, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Do you feel any, I mean, you, Tim, you already said you're cool with that.
Yeah.
So no discussion on floor or a roll call vote. Charlene?
Jim Peck.
Yes.
Tim Moore.
Yes.
Lori Muller.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Francine Hart.
Yes.
Okay, that was easy. 500, the motion passes. Let's move to the definition of function hall, which Lori already said is harmless, although we had a suggestion from Francine for maybe an adjustment to the, do you want, you want to, you still want to make an adjustment, Francine, to the definition?
It's just a suggestion for the board, if you want to avoid, you know, the freestanding function hall, such as utopia, or any version thereof. I think if you remove the building wording, verbiage, that might make things easier. But, you know, that's obviously up to the board to decide.
So your motion is specifically, what, what would you do?
At home.
Strike for building, just put a room.
A room, but strike the word "or" building. That's pretty simple. Is that going to cause any problems, Tim, you think, or you gave up the definition?
I think we should leave building in.
Leave it in.
I'm thinking about that.
I'm waiting for Tim, so. No, two conversations.
I mean, the intent was that with the definition of function, function hall would allow for a standalone function hall.
For the definition.
Yeah.
The building.
So.
Which means a separate building. It's kind of like the old Sawyers was a standalone function hall. That's all they did, right? Sawyers Restaurant.
Well.
I remember going there. There were all sorts of functions.
Yeah.
It was called Sawyer's Function Hall, I think, so.
The problem would be, of course, you build what we would be calling a function hall, and then you add a kitchen. And at those functions, you serve food.
Yeah.
Or alcohol, if you get a license to serve alcohol. So now you could argue that, yeah, there's, there's two rooms. There's a kitchen and a function hall. But.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, that kind of, that stretches the definition of what the intent for a room or building, but.
Okay. Francine?
Yeah, and, you know, to be honest with you all, with COVID still not having gone away anytime soon, this may be a very moot point.
Yeah. Well, COVID hopefully won't be here forever.
Yeah, exactly.
So you're right, but we have to make an ordinance for, for, you know, that'll be permanent. Did you have a comment, John?
Yeah, the only comment, a function hall can be a standalone building, you know, I think you want to leave it in there, because there is a difference, a room or building.
Right, should be both.
You know, any, any restaurant can have their own little function hall, or any type of operation can have a room.
Right.
And label it as a function room or a function hall. But there are, you know, buildings being built specifically as function halls.
So Francine, are you okay if we just leave it in? I mean, you were trying to fix the odd problem.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
I just put it out there because I just, I bought a sense of people being concerned that, you know, hoopla lounges were going to be spiking up and down 125. I don't think anyone would like to see that.
That's what I thought. So there's no motion to, to make a change?
I would draw it right now.
Okay, was there a motion?
No, does it, does it say building and room?
Okay, you have a question, Karen?
Yeah, does it say building and/or room?
You're just going, the way it's written, there's no change.
Okay, all right.
So does everybody agree with that? Can we move on? Can I get a motion to that definition? Are there other changes you want to make to the definition? I don't see any.
Well, I don't even know if I even want to add it, because.
Well, yet, we don't have, we don't have a definition. If, is functional in the zoning ordinance as yet?
No.
It will be when we get to your overlay, right?
Well, if we didn't, well, we can discuss it when we, when we get there.
We're trying to encourage residents to live in the C1.
Okay.
So.
Well, this, just having a definition doesn't by itself cause a problem.
Well, if there was no, if there was no definition, they'd have to go to the ZVA.
I suppose. Okay.
But we do have, we do have function halls, in effect. We have, you know, the, the, what's, what's the one on Main Street? The VFW or?
Well, the VFW.
Yeah, that's a private club, though. That's kind of.
Is it a private club? Is it a function hall? I don't know. And, or the fishing game, obviously, has, is a private club, but has function rooms. So does it help us to have a definition?
Not really.
It doesn't.
Tim, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I mean, in those cases, I think in both C1 and C2, there's a permitted use called social club, or something to that effect. So that's exactly what those would be.
Yeah.
So.
Like I said before, the only example I can remember on 125, there was a function hall, and it had a, had Sawyer's Function Hall. That's gone, so there isn't any.
Yeah.
But if somebody came along and they wanted to put another Tim Moore's social function hall, then you wouldn't be able to do it. I guess you'd have to get an exception. I think that's what we're saying. Is that what you want?
I'd like to do away with it at this time.
Okay, I get it. All right, Francine.
I mean, we're trying to encourage residents to live in C1.
All right.
Why do we want them to have noise and music next door?
I hear you.
Till 1, 2:00 in the morning with a wedding, or a, I don't know.
Right. They have hours of operation, so.
I don't know.
But Francine?
Okay, so my, my thought is, the definition of a function hall is independent of whether we allow it in a district or not. I think we need to have a definition to clarify what it is, but that doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be included in the C1 district. I think they're two separate issues.
Yeah, you're probably, it's probably right. I know what you're saying, Lori, that by putting it in there, it opens it up.
Okay, so then we.
But if you don't have another zoning warrant that says you can have it in that district, then it's a moot point, I think.
So then we'd have to remove it from Tim's C1 overlay.
All right, well, we're coming, we're coming to that. If we remove the definition, we're kind of almost saying, I mean, what do you think if we remove, remove it from, which one is it, number?
I'm not sure which number it is.
The overlay is.
Well, I mean.
The overlay.
I think what Francine said is exactly right. I mean, I think we have to leave the, if the, if the definition of function hall is suitable, then I think we should add it to the definition. Whether we add the use to any district or not is another.
Yeah, I can see it both ways. I can see that if you add it, now it makes it easier to just add that to a district. You just need one amendment. This makes it a lot easier. If you don't, then you don't have a definition. But I don't see whether it's beneficial to, I mean, you have a definition that's not used. I don't know. If we're going to take it out of all districts, it seems to me you don't need that definition. But I, I know it doesn't have any impact, but why do you even have it out there? I'm just thinking out loud.
Well, for one thing, it helps, you know, some of the, some of the uses are somewhat general in nature. So if you have a definition of what certain things are.
Yeah.
And you don't want that use in a district, and this general.
Probably helps the code enforcement officer to say, well, that's what it is, and it's not allowed.
Right.
Exactly.
Knows what it is.
Exactly.
So I kind of think it's not going to.
Okay, okay.
If you're okay with that.
That makes sense.
Okay. So I think we, is anybody still hung up? We could, I could take a motion to move this forward to the, to the ballot, as written. Anybody want to so move?
I'll do that.
Okay, Tim's moving to, moving forward as it's written here. We're not going to read it yet.
We're just going to leave it.
Did you get a second from anybody?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, Karen, seconds. Roll call. Charlene?
Yes. Jim Peck.
Yes.
Tim Moore.
Yes.
Lori Muller.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Francine Hart.
Yes.
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes 5-0-0. And if I got it right, the next one is seven. That we're gonna look at. We, we moved, I thought we did five. Did we not do five?
No, where's five?
No, the next one is seven.
Yeah, we did five and we did six.
We did five and six.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, we have, if you can see on that next page, we did move those forward. So we moved down to number seven. Let me read it. Proposed Plating, Plastol Zoning Amendment Z217. Are you in favor of Amendment 7 as proposed by the Plastol Planning Board to the Plastol Zoning Ordinance? Article 2 definitions by deleting definitions for groundwater, poorly drained soil, and for very poorly drained soil, all of which will be moved to Article 4 definitions and to modify Article 4 wetlands by modifying the title of Article from Wetlands to Natural Resource Protection and by replacing Sections 2018 through 2026 with new text that defines a wetlands conservation district at boundaries, permitted uses, prohibited uses, appeals, and a more comprehensive set of definitions. Now, we're not gonna read through, remember last time it took three of us to read it. So this, this extensive work that Tim did, and I think, I kinda remember there weren't any lingering issues, were there?
Um, not, not really. There was a typo in a date. The date was 2015, and there was a space in between.
So that's been corrected.
So, that, that's been corrected. Actually, we, the correction we made was to strike the whole sentence, which was difficult to understand at best. And it, it applied to DES's environmental rules, which you have to observe anyway, regardless of what is in the particular warrant. So, we corrected that by striking that sentence.
That was the only change?
Other than, we did send it to Attorney Cleary. He came back with a few
Right.
Kind of wordsmithing changes. So we incorporated all of those.
Okay, does, does anybody want to go in more detail? I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna not do it, if you want to do it, and it's a long, we read it last time, and there's a lot to it.
That's good.
So I want to just be sure that everybody's comfortable with it, because we're recommending it moving forward to go to the ballot. Okay, it sounds like nobody's really hung up on it, so I'll entertain a motion to move this one to the ballot.
I'm going to make that motion.
Okay, Tim moves, and who, seconds?
I'll second.
Okay, Lori? All right, any discussion? All right, they're being on a call for a roll call vote again.
Another one, Tim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lauren Mallett?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, that was easy. 5-0-0. Thank you. We are at two more. We are at number eight, which is the bottom of Page 2 in the ballot recap. So I'll read the amendment, proposed amendment. Proposed Plastol Zoning Amendment Z218. Are you in favor of Amendment Number 8 as proposed by the Plastol Planning Board to the Plastol Zoning Ordinance, Article 5, Establishments of Districts and District Regulations 220-28? Establishment of Districts, zoning map by creating a new zoning district, C1 Mixed Use Overlay District, whose objectives and characteristics are shown below. Note, the full text of the proposed ordinance is available through the planning board, is on the town's website, C2021 Zoning Proposals Voters Guide. So it's all in the voters' guide, will be available at the polls. And there's the objectives and characteristics. I don't, I don't think I need to read that. That will be in the ballot as well. So, that's the C1 district that you have, Tim. Is there any issues? I hate to bring it up, but function hall? Do you have function hall listed in your uses?
We do, yeah. So, it was a couple of corrections or, not corrections as much as.
Okay, so where, where are we looking? Would it be in the voters' guide, under number?
On the handout.
Be, be both in the handout and the voters' guide.
Yeah, go to handout.
So, yeah, I'm looking at.
What, what page in the handout?
Handout.
It's after the wetland stuff.
The page that's titled C1 Overlay District?
Okay, there's, there's not numbered these pages in the handout, so. Yeah, okay, you turn to it, it says the top of the page.
Yeah, flip it over.
Yeah, it says C1 Overlay District. So if we can all go there, what are the changes, Tim?
So on the, just below halfway down or so.
In red?
In red.
Yeah.
Just added the phrase, and the permitted uses must conform to those listed in paragraph B below.
That's harmless, that's good.
Yeah, just to kind of clarify.
And then the next page?
On the next page.
You added a use. I think we talked about that last time.
We added, adding multifamily last time. Function hall, we can.
Scratch?
We can scratch, I guess, if we don't want it in the C1 district.
Anybody have objections to, I hate to, hate to even ask. Does anybody have any objections to scratching function hall here?
Where is it listed?
I'm looking around, I see no objections, so we'll scratch it. Thank you very much. Keep going, Tim.
Then the next, the next change, kind of at the bottom of that same page.
Yeah, in red.
We had a discussion last time about the maximum height, which stated 45 feet of three stories. Added in parentheses after stories, number of distinct levels, I should say, of above ground, number of distinct levels above ground for residential, commercial, or industrial uses.
Okay, and then that's pretty good. Keep going. There's, there's a strikeout on the next page?
Yep.
Under layout?
Yeah, again, just, just some wordsmithing, yeah, to make it read a little better.
Yep.
Changing from, saying that cyclist safety is emphasized while maintained high quality of life, changing that to read cyclist safety is emphasized and a high quality of life is maintained.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I think that was.
That's it?
That was it.
Okay.
We had talked about, there was a paragraph B under the Plaza Concept, which just, yeah, never came to pass. It was a TBD, TBD, and it was determined not to do anything additional. So that's gone.
Okay, so we do have D1, that's, that'll stay in there, Plaza Concept?
I'm sorry, Jim?
The last paragraph, Plaza Concept, still stays in there?
Yes, yeah.
And that's where it ends, right there?
Yes.
Okay, so with taking function hall out, does anybody have any other changes? I'll, you know, take, take a few minutes to look through there. And Tim added multifamily residential, which makes sense, since it's multi-use, so. Okay, so I'm looking around, and I don't see anybody jumping up and down. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to, to move it forward to the ballot with Tim's changes, which we just discussed, and removing function hall. Hey, who wants to make, who wants to so move what I just said?
So move.
All right, thank you, Karen, so moved. So you understand what you, what the move, movement? Okay, thank you. As long as Sherlene, as long as we all understand what the hell we're voting on.
And I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so any discussion? All right, let's do another roll call. Sherlene, you're doing a great job.
Tim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lauren Mallett?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, 5-0-0, we have one left, which is Karen, I call it Karen C3, but it doesn't say it. Maybe we should put Karen's, but Karen proposed this, and I think we all like it.
I have a question.
So, I'm not gonna read it. Maybe I should read just the ballot part?
Yeah.
I'll read the ballot part, okay, but not the objectives. Proposed Plastol Zoning Amendment Z219. Are you in favor of Amendment Number 9 as opposed by the, as proposed by the Plastol Planning Board to the Plastol Zoning Ordinance, Article 5, Establishments of Districts and District Regulations 220-8? Establishment of Districts, zoning map by creating a new zoning district, C3-Commercial 3, whose objectives and characteristics are shown below. And again, the full text will be in the voters' guide, and you can see the objectives and characteristics. And the key here is we now have a nice map. I came in, they're up here, Tim has one over there. And if you haven't seen it, I don't know if you've seen it, Francine, but it basically, they had the map done, you have seen it, okay. Do you have a question?
Yes, I do, because the map I had before made it very clear on just the street there. This one is including all the different ones. It's got orange color for the District 3, it's got the green color, whatever it's supposed to be for, for the C1. That was the map that, fine, you can have that separate. I just want to add a last sentence to just explain it, forget the map. I really do. I, I, I'm not happy with the map, and I don't, you know, you didn't like my map, so I don't want any map. I just want to add a sentence at the very end of objectives and characteristics, just stating where it is.
And what would that verbiage be?
It would be, the new district starts at intersection of Main Street and Plasto Road 125, north to the Kingston State Line.
Okay, but the, just one comment I would make.
Yep.
Notice that this map shows that there's an industrial district on the, on the, in that, where you just said, which is from Old County Road to
Right.
the, the Kingston line.
Yep.
So your statement is not entirely true. If you just say that, then everybody would think that that section, which is industrial, is now gonna be C3. That's all I'm saying. But what other comments do we have, John?
Yeah, you could clarify it, be exactly the way you want it, by
Okay.
the new C3 zoning district shall consist of the former C1 zoning district boundaries within the designation.
What she just said, from
Okay.
From Main Street to the Kingston line.
So, add C boundaries, right, C1 boundaries?
Yeah, the existing C1 boundaries.
Okay, so how would I add that to, you know, the new district?
The new C3 zoning district
Yep.
shall replace the existing C1 zoning district.
Between Main Street and.
And then I would say at intersection of Main Street and Plasto Road, north to the Kingston State Line.
So that would exclude the.
Kingston Town Line.
We're not touching the industrial, the industrial stays industrial.
You're right.
I like that.
Mr. Chair?
Excuse me, what, where would that go? Would it go after objectives?
I want it to be the final sentence, right after objectives and characteristics.
Yeah, but remember, there's more, there's more, there's more that's not shown on the ballot, so would that, other stuff that's, they could look at, the detail, which is uses and everything, that would go beyond that explanation. They would see the verbiage above, and would you, you're saying no map?
Yeah, I, you don't have to do the map then, if we say it that way.
Yeah, you, I think you are better off without a map.
Yeah, I agree.
Without a map?
Yeah, because.
Don't you think the last sentence, the very end, should be it?
Yeah, because.
Okay, so you agree no map, John?
Yeah, because within any, within every zoning ordinance, I think the best ones describe in writing what they are. But what will happen is you'll have a zoning map
Oh, yeah.
that will be updated, will show this.
If they want to look at it, they can see it.
Yeah, whatever that color is, they're orangeish, yellow.
I just wanted to point out, I saw, it's up here on the.
It's a good map for everything.
But if everybody's seeing the, the map itself, everybody's cool with the map, it won't be in here, that's what you're suggesting, I'm just saying the map is, is cool. It's all right, it's, it's good.
So just eliminate that, but the last sentence would be just what we said. Have you got the last sentence?
You want to, you, you get that, Sherlene? She has to write it up, so.
Somebody wants to get it to you again, or I'll pick it up on the video.
Mr. Chair, I was just gonna mention, along the same lines of what John said, if you look in the voters' guide, the very last sentence on the last page, Page 15.
Yeah, that's what I'm taking.
Is essentially, you know, a good headline of what we're trying to say.
But when you're in the booth, what she's saying is that you wouldn't have the voters' guide. It's good to have the voters' guide, but when you're in the booth, she's saying she wants to have that definition.
Yeah.
I just want a reminder.
And that's, that's some good language already in the voters' guide.
It would be redundant, because it's in the voters' guide. If you read the voters' guide, it's already in the ballot, but if, I think it should be in the ballot, too. You're not suggesting.
No, I'm, I'm just saying.
Pointing out.
It was already there.
This is said in the voters' guide, we should just, we could cut and paste it into the ballot as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
You could just cut and paste it.
You're right.
Okay, so as, as long as Sherlene was taking the minutes, is able to do it, you can always go back and listen. Do you listen to this tape, anyway? Okay, so you want to read it back?
What John said was very good. I like what you said.
So you can just take it out of the voters' guide? So is the voters' guide okay? Did you look at the voters' guide?
Yeah, but exactly.
I'll just read what I said, and then we'll fill in the blanks.
Right, I like what you said.
But what you want to get is that the new C3 zoning district shall consist of the existing C1 zoning district.
Yeah.
From north of Main Street.
From intersection.
Yeah, north of Main Street, at the intersection of Main Street.
I think the voters' guide, if you look at the voters' guide, that's exactly the wording. Think we can use that wording in the, in the motion.
Does it say from 125 intersection?
It says the proposed C3 zoning district replaces the C1 district in the area north of the intersection of Main Street to Kingston Town Line. So it's the same thing.
Oh, it does, okay. I didn't think it did.
Oh, you wrote it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
Thank you, John.
I, I wondered why you liked it. Okay, so we have a motion?
I want it on the ballot, yeah.
Okay, so you're making a motion to that effect, to amend it?
Right, to please include that.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second?
Is this, is this a motion for the whole thing?
It's just an amendment to add that in.
Okay, because I have another amendment to propose.
Okay, you're like, it's just one amendment, we can have other amendments. So we're voting on the amendment to the zoning amendment.
Okay.
It's called a zoning amendment, so it's a change or amendment to the amendment, okay? Roll call.
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lauren Leut?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Carter?
Yes.
Okay, 500, that amendment to the amendment, and John has another amendment to the amendment.
Okay, now, I would be totally remiss if I did not bring this up, even though it was kicked many times previously, okay? But this is another thing that's of real importance. In zoning districts, you always do show the allowed uses, you know? You don't mention the prohibited uses, because that just creates another list, you know? So by singling out for this zoning district prohibited uses, and then just listing one contractor's yard, you know, just by the thought of having prohibited uses, you would have this list of prohibited uses. But within any zoning ordinance, there's caveat language right at the beginning. Those uses that are not listed are therefore considered prohibited. So that's within every zoning ordinance you'll find.
So you're suggesting we don't need that phrase, prohibitive uses contractor's yard? Just take it out?
Yeah, because it's not, it's not used, and I know.
I agree, I agree with that. Are you okay with that, Karen?
This is what we discussed last time. And I said, I wanted that particular one in there, because just because it's not mentioned, doesn't mean it can't go in there.
I think what John is saying is if it's not mentioned, it's not allowed use, so by default, it's prohibited.
Yeah, and that goes with
Didn't work.
the standard procedure for all zoning ordinances.
It's like adding, I don't know what the analogy is.
Well, there is another one that does have prohibited uses.
Not necessary to add it.
Yeah.
You're trying, you're trying to be doubly, doubly sure it's already, it's already prohibited, because it's not listed.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure you're okay, I don't want to, you know.
I, there is another one that has prohibited uses on one of yours, one of the other ones that were in here.
Now, now, if you, if you did have a zoning, zoning ordinance, right? Say it's a table, it has a traditional table of uses. It does have all of the uses listed, and then it has the zoning districts going in this way. So the list goes, goes vertical, the uses, right? And the zoning districts are horizontal. And you'll have a zero for prohibited usually, for that use being prohibited in that zoning district. A P for special permit, and S for, or S for special permit, and P for site plan or permitted use. So there is provision within that type of zoning designation, a zoning use table. This town doesn't practice, or does not include, a zoning use table. All of the uses that are permitted are listed within the zoning district that that particular section of the zoning ordinance is discussing. You know, so it's, it's, it's set up differently. I'd say it's set up more along the lines of a modern format zoning district, because it's very specific to the district. So you have the uses allowed, indicated within that zoning district, the heights that are allowed, stories that are allowed, the setbacks, everything specific to the zoning district that's, of that section of the zoning ordinance. Many zoning ordinances out there rely on the table of uses as the reference point. And then you have the alphabet soup of what a P stands for, what an S stands for, what a zero stands for, or an O stands for. You know, that's your standard. But the way Plastow has it set up, it's, it's really specific to the zoning district, and you have all the allowances and all the prohibitions listed.
Well, two things. My, my first comment is that if we list the uses, and we don't list contractor's yard, we have a code enforcement officer, he comes along, and he, he looks, and he sees contractor's yard is not listed. He's going to, he's going to say it's not, it's not going to be used. That's my first comment.
Yeah.
The second thing is, you mentioned another district that does list prohibited uses. Which, which district is that?
No, I, it was in his terms, permitted, you know, used by, special permit, you know, exactly what he was just stating. But there is in the book, I have seen it, other things, said non-permitted uses.
Can you, can you tell us where that is?
No, I, I just went looking through the book, and I saw it in some places, but this is why I, I put it in.
Well, we're focusing on this one, we're not focusing on, there's some problem that, that's listed that way, and it's not necessary. We're not, we're not voting on that. So the question is, would you feel comfortable removing the prohibited use? I'm not trying to say you should, I mean, if you still feel you want it in there, but we've made an argument that you really don't need it.
I just don't know what harm it's doing, whether it's in or not. I mean, what difference, look if it is in.
The only harm, the only point, counterpoint, is that if you're going to include it exclusively for this, people can make an argument, well, it doesn't say this, this particular use.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
You know, but all uses are prohibited if they're not specifically listed. Yeah.
Okay, Francine, you have a comment?
Yeah, that was exactly what I was going to say. If, if the list says this is what you can do, if it's not on the list, by implication, it's prohibited.
Right, I agree. So I don't think, I think you could remove it, Karen. I don't, I think you're over worrying it. I don't think it's going to happen where, if you have a good code enforcement officer, he's going to allow contractor's yard if it's not listed.
Yep.
And if he did, somebody would have a case against it, because it's, it's not listed, so. I don't think it's, and I don't want to, like, badger into, if you feel, I mean, you, what you're trying to do is make damn sure there's no contractor's yard in C3.
In that C3, right.
I don't think you have to worry, I think if it's not listed, you're, you're good.
Well, you've got industry right at the end of it.
Yeah, I am. You know, if, let's put it this way, if it happens that somebody have, slips it in, and we take this out, then you can come back and beat us all up, or something like that. Does anybody else have any comments? Does anybody have any objections to removing that? I think that's the consensus, and you may be against it, but it's four to one, so. So if we, if we remove that, is there any other changes we need to make to C3?
Just that last sentence in.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to move it forward. Actually, we probably should vote on that amendment, since we voted on the other amendment. So if somebody wants to move, I guess I'll move, I can move, right? I'll move that we remove prohibitive uses contractor's yard. So I made a motion, so I'll give a second?
I'll second.
Okay, ten seconds, any discussion? Again, I'm not trying to railroad you here, Karen.
No.
So there being no discussion, we'll have another roll call on the amendment to the amendment, second amendment to the amendment, number nine. Yeah.
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lauren Leut?
No.
Ooh.
Karen Robinson?
No.
All right.
Francine Carter?
Yes.
Okay, well, 3-2-0, I'm a little bit setback that you guys didn't, you know, I used to have, you know, whatever, you voted against it. So 3-2-0, the motion passes to remove it. Again, I don't think it'll be a problem. So now I'll entertain a motion to move the Z 21-9 to the ballot with the two amendments we made to this amendment.
Jim, before we do that,
Yeah.
I'd just like to remind people that, I mean, the ballot's obviously going to be on the, that is the ballot. But also, at the polling place will be the handout, which people can take if they want to, or they don't have to take it. Previous years, we would have asked them to turn it back in.
Right.
Because of COVID, now, if they take it home or throw it away. I think in prior years, maybe 25 or 30 people at the most have done that. So I think our plan would be, we'd make up a couple dozen copies, have them there. If they, people start to use them, they call back to the town hall. Dee would make more copies, bring it down to the, to the highway ground, Public Works.
Yeah, well, I was wondering, well, like, is it handouts, or is it the voters' guide, that we were going to have some copies in the library?
Yeah, they'll have them in the library.
Some people have asked where they could get them before the vote.
I don't know when they'll be ready, though. When will they be ready? The, the vote is the 30th, today's the 20th, we have 10 days, so if somebody wanted to, to look at it before, well, the delivered doesn't go over zoning, does it?
No.
No, it doesn't, so.
No, I'm talking about, yeah, what is available.
You're talking about before March, certainly by, before March, it'll be in the library.
The voters' guide should be in the library.
Yeah, yeah, we have plenty of time.
So the voters' guide would be the ballot plus the handout.
Right.
Okay.
As Mark today.
Francine?
So.
It's my understanding that we need to post to the, the warrant, to the ballots on the 25th, which is Monday. And so I am meeting with Mark tomorrow to try to fine tune all these other details. And so there are a number of voters' guides, you know, obviously, and handouts. So I think I'm going to try to make arrangements so that there's a copy machine at the Public Works garage. I don't know if there is or not, but we can make arrangements potentially to do that. So if people run out of these handouts or voters' guides, we can print them off there, and I'll have to run back and forth to town hall, but we'll work that out tomorrow.
So are you saying, when will the voting guide and the ballot be printed?
I, I mean, if it's ready to go, I would say the voters' guide should be out potentially on, on Monday, if you can manage it. The more, you know, time that the voters have to read this and look it over, the better off it will be.
So plenty of time before it's delivered.
We can also have it available at the delivered session as well, if we wish.
Yeah, okay, so are you good with that, Karen?
Oh, no, that's fine, I just wanted to know what the timing was.
It sounds like, since, since we have moved all of them to move forward, we can vote, yeah.
We didn't vote on this last, no, we didn't vote on the last one.
So the tricky one is this last one, now that we have kind of a split vote.
Yeah, there was two amendments stuck, stuck on it.
With the two amendments, but they both prevailed.
It's okay.
Yeah.
So I wanted, just wanted to.
But in its entirety, it should be a motion in its entirety.
I, you know, that's what I was moving to next.
And that might, that might bring unity.
Right.
So I just, I just wanted to point that out, because on the last page of the handout,
Yeah, Tim was rejecting that we never voted to move it forward with the two amendments, so.
Full-size map.
Did we have a, did we have a motion to move them forward? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the two amendments, Article Z 21-9. Anyone?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Tim is making the motion. I'm sorry, I don't hear too well. And who's seconding?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Francine. All right, so any discussion? All right, one more roll call.
Okay, Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lauren Leut?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
And Francine Carter?
Yes.
Okay, 500, so that'll move forward with those two amendments. So Tim, are you the one that goes back to, or John goes back to Dee, and we'll get all this?
Yeah.
Not a lot of change here.
Yeah, I, I'll leave all my notes for her for tomorrow, then we'll go over them first thing in the morning.
Yeah, you wrote the last sentence, that was good.
And we still have nine, and they're, this is the order, one through nine. We didn't reject any of them, they're all moving forward with, with them, with changes.
Yeah, and they all have five.
Francine?
I just had a question for you guys on Z 21-1. Is that RSA statute actually XXX?
Which one are you talking about?
I'm looking at the first zoning amendment, Z 21-1, personal service business.
Yeah, we voted on that.
In a test, in accordance with NH RSA title XXX. Is that the actual title of it? Or are you just saying we have to fill in that number, that numeral?
No, it's Title 30, XXX.
It is, okay, all right, okay. Sorry.
You don't know that one? That's XXX.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, I know, XXX.
XXX.
30.
We will go there, okay. So we, we, we made it through all nine, and I'm looking at, okay, so I guess I can close the hearing, right? I will close the hearing at 7:32. Unless, you know, being a hearing, I was supposed to ask for the public and all the people in this room, and all the thousands of people on, online. There's nobody in the room, so I don't think there's anybody. Dean has left the room, so I, I doubt there's anybody out there. I don't know, should we check?
No, nobody showed up.
I don't want, I don't want somebody to, Dean said there was nobody out there, so I just don't want somebody to come back and say, I tried to get on, and I didn't. Just to be sure.
I'd be coming down.
No one there.
There's nobody out there.
Okay, no one out there, so I will close the hearing. Dean, there's nobody out there, right?
Yeah, I was just going to verify that for you. We have nobody connected by now.
Beautiful.
That's correct.
All right, the hearing is closed at 7:33 now. Okay, I don't have any old business or new business. John, do you have anything, our communications or updates? We did get an email from Dee today about a potential, an application.
Yeah.
But that's not going to hit us until February, I think.
That's correct, yep. It, it's for a 1,500 square foot outbuilding.
Right.
Yeah.
And nothing from Newton Project is going to hit us?
No, but they're finally ready to come in. They haven't made the final changes, but they do have all the information they need to finally submit a plan. And that won't be until the second meeting in February.
Right.
Either, at the earliest.
Okay, so our next meeting will be, help me out on that.
That is the first Wednesday.
February 1st?
I don't know, I don't have my calendar.
February, it is.
I can tell you in a second, February 3rd?
February 3rd would be our next meeting, and it's usually a, you know, meeting where we, what is it called? It's a.
Homework.
Yeah, workshop. I don't, I don't have any workshop items, so John or Tim, you guys have anything?
Nope.
No, I mean, the only thing we, yeah, we won't even need to do any wrap-up, because the delivered session doesn't handle any zoning, so.
So we should meet, and, okay. So we'll play by ear, we have another 20, two weeks before that.
Yeah, I mean, we're obligated to meet once a month, anyway, so.
Francine, you have a handup?
Yeah, I just have a question. Does the planning board have a formal position on the proposed Kingston distribution site up on 125? I've been getting a bunch of emails regarding that.
That's the one that's way up north. I looked into it, and I actually went up there. There actually was, there is a distribution center there now, nowhere near the size of what they're proposing. The one you're talking about is Amazon?
Yep.
Okay, and I'm told by everybody up there that's still, you know, being jawed about, but it's not moving forward at this point, hasn't become before their planning board. And it, and by the way, the, the person who was concerned about it was saying that traffic would go through Plastow. I'm not convinced that's true, because it's for New Hampshire, so it's not necessarily going to go south. Some will come south, but they're not that far, they're closer to, what is it, 111?
101, 101.
101.
It's 101.
So, I mean, the distance from Plastow, I know I, I sent an email, I remember it was, it's at least 10 or 15 miles, so.
It's 12 exactly from that site to 495.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And then it's 5 heading north to 101.
101.
Right, so, I mean, I've heard people concerned about it, and one lady kept putting things out there, so. It doesn't seem to me as, but, you know, if it comes, if it becomes, we wouldn't really have any say, right? Would we, John?
No, no, but, you know, you know, everybody has an opinion, and everybody's entitled to an opinion, for sure. But when you look at the traffic, the primary traffic route for a facility that size, that, that's mega regional transportation facility for the, the moving of produce, products, everything. It's like an Amazon super site. I don't know if it's Amazon, but it's a super site for distribution. Everything coming down 95, that has to make its way over to Montreal, say. Or all points south and west. You're going to go to 101, you're going to drop off whatever you're dropping, that's going to be redistributed in whatever direction. It's going to go back up on 101, and it's going to go either up 89 eventually, or it's going south on 93 to 495. You know, in a lot, or, and from 495, it's trying to get to 84, and from there, it's just, you know? So the vast bulk of any traffic associated with that huge traffic, traffic route, that truck route, it's all 101, that's what it's being put there for. You know, somebody would have to be specific going in the direction south on 125.
Who wants 125?
If they're just going to Haverhill, or it's a local run. You know, you'll have a, you know, a certain amount of traffic associated with that, coming from that site. But this is a major satellite distribution center for major truck routes, long-distance truck routes. So everything coming down from Canada, you know, that has to be redistributed, it'll go there, So everything coming down from Canada, you know, that has to be redistributed, it'll go there, and it will continue, say, westbound on 101. And the same vice versa with the opposite route. You know, truck traffic that's coming up 495 from 84, 95, it's going to make its way to 101 from 93.
Well, the other thing I saw, and this is where you used to be, in Hudson, they made a, they actually submitted plans to the Hudson Planning Board for a much bigger, huge, huge facility over there in Hudson. And in there, I looked at their proposal, and there was some significant tax dollars, net of additional fire and police. It sounded like a compelling argument, but I don't know where Hudson is. They've had four or five hearings down, really?
It was, it was a 3-2 vote against, and it was supposed to be, it was going in supposedly a 3-2 in favor. But what happens with economies, and, you know, and I witnessed it there for 17 years. When the, when I first went there in '02, the economy was really going gangbusters, and traffic was all up and down 3A, and, you know, it's like coming into Plastow. You know, and nobody wants to put up with the queue of traffic. And, you know, they just had a lot of consternation about further growth. And then when the economy went south, you know, and everybody's losing their jobs, they wanted development. Well, this is my theory, my hypothesis about the economy. When people are losing their jobs, and the economy's not delivering those jobs, communities want those jobs created. So they look for economic development-type people, and planners in particular, to make it rain. Meaning, you know, let's have the economy grow. And it's a hard thing to do when the economy's not doing that. So the bottom line is, when the economy is willing to give you economic growth, create jobs, yeah, there's traffic that goes along with it. But with that economic growth, you get the economic relief in the form of, you know, more stable tax base, or a growing tax base. You know, it spreads out the tax burden among more people, businesses, you know, residents, so it's not always, it's not all on the back of the residents for the economic growth that takes place relative to government services, and the need to grow that revenue base. And it's, it's created, a lot of it's created through economic development in a community. So when people are losing their jobs, and the economy's not doing what you need it to do, it's hard to make it do it. But you grab what you can when it's available, and that gets you through the hard times. You know, it's kind of a biblical thing, where, you know, you harvest what you can when you can harvest to get you through the drought.
One question for you, John, is if they didn't approve it in Hudson, is now Amazon now looking to Kingston?
You know, whoever, whoever it is, there's so much, there's so, there's such a change in the economy. You know, the storefronts are going empty, the consumers are still buying like crazy, but they're getting it delivered. Everything's getting delivered, whether it's pharmaceuticals, you know, and it's just not kids anymore, it's adults, it's senior citizens. Everybody's into it now, so all, there's so much more mobility of distribution of goods that the consumers are buying and requesting, that, you know, you have, it's this huge need for these big distribution facilities.
Yeah.
And more than what, you know, an average person can imagine. But they're all over the place. Look at North Andover, Amazon owns the former Lucid site. That's 150 acres, there's already a million-plus square feet there, a million-plus. I think it's a million-six, and they're planning for a huge facility, you know, much larger than what's there now. And that includes its own airstrip, too, so.
Well, it sounded to me, when I looked at the Hudson one, it was huge. I don't think it was a million, but it was 900,000, it was huge.
Yeah, yeah.
And their proposal, I don't want to quote a number, but it was, it was millions and millions of dollars of tax revenue, it was, it had that appeal to it. So, you know, it sounds like this is going to be around, we don't know what's going on with Kingston, Hudson got turned down, but it's not going to go away, like you say.
That's a 500-acre site, by the way, too.
Right.
And.
In Hudson, yeah.
Yeah, it's.
We don't have, by the way, I don't see any 500 acres here, they could even do it at Plastow.
You know, and that, on that issue, the one that got shot down, what it had to do with, there's a dispute in whether or not that's within the Seward District. And the Seward District is controlled only by the Board of Selectment.
Oh.
So it has no say of the planning board.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's an incredible case study in zoning and planning, if you really get into the newspaper articles on it.
Okay.
There's some, there's been some heated discussions.
Any other items I hate to bring it up? Do you know anything about ProQuip?
Oh.
Were you going to ask that?
No, I was going to say something else.
Okay, do you know anything about ProQuip? Where, I know there was an appeal movement by Mr. Cleary to dismiss the ZBA issue, and I don't know where that's from.
Yeah, that's still, that's still pending.
Still in the courts, okay.
Yeah, it does have a date scheduled, and it's a zone type of meeting.
It's under a new judge, but we're still waiting for that judge to move. Okay, Lori, what else you have?
I just wanted to compliment Dee on what a good job she did with the zoning amendments, the voters' guide, and the handout. Thank you, Dee.
Yep.
Okay, Dee, if you're listening.
And the map was very good.
And the map, and the map.
Map, yep, that was a very good map.
Yeah, very good job. We appreciate all the support you give us.
On the issue of the map, okay, do we want that zoning map with C-3 mounted in it?
It's not going to be in the ballot. But we do want it in.
We still put it where you were going to put it, oh, yes.
You want it in the deliberative session, mounted as well as the voting day.
Yep, that's perfect.
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay, anything else? All right, they're being done. Thank you all for coming, and we will adjourn the meeting at 7:45. Thank you.
Exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.